Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the Real Estate Wisdom Podcast, episode number nine. I'm your host Vishal Kapoor Realtor, and today we have a very special episode exploring the intricate relationship between real estate and local governance right here in Oakville, Ontario. Joining us are two esteemed individuals who play a crucial role in shaping our community. First, let me introduce councillor Navnanda, who served as the town and regional councillor for Oakville Ward Seven. With a strong background in healthcare and a deep commitment to our community, councillor Nanda has a remarkable track record of advocacy and service. She has been a tireless champion for issues such as new schools and community safety, making Oakville the desirable place we all love. Welcome, Regional Councillor Navnanda.
Thank you. Thank you, Vish, for having us on the show today. Really appreciate it.
I really appreciate that you took your time and come your busy time and happen to present in our podcast. And alongside her, we have a councillor Scott Shi, Town Councillor for Ward Seven. Councillor Shi brings over twenty-five years of professional experience in executive education and global learning. His dedication to community outreach and youth leadership is truly inspiring. Moreover, his involvement in organizations like the Oak Medical Education Foundation and the Chinese Canadian Association for Civic Engagement highlights his commitment to Oakville's well-being. Welcome councillor Scott Shi.
Thank you, Vish. Thank you for having me today. I'm very excited to share some views and ideas with you.
Well, that's great. It took me a while to pronounce your last name, just to let you know, right? I was keep on saying Zee, but then now I want to hear it's Shea.
Yes, correct.
Alright, Shea. So remember, Scott Shea. Well, welcome and thank you again for both of you to coming and spending some time with us. Let's have a discussion about how local government is involved in development of real estate. And what are the challenges out there? What's their plan for future? And what our community can do and what your roles are? So first I start with, because a lot of people don't know, even I didn't know like a few years ago until I heard about Nav is running and that what the regional town councillor is, like what their role is. So with Nav, what's your role?
So as a regional councillor, both regional and town council, but on the regional side, we look at more at waste and water, we look at regional roads, we look at sustainability, we're also doing housing support, we do police and paramedics. So those are on the regional side for all of Halton region. And that's what we oversee. We're obviously looking at financial sustainability as well. This is very important. And like you said, the most important issue at hand right now is housing.
Correct.
And you know, how we house all the new immigrants that are arriving, not just in Canada, but in our very own town of Oakville.
Oh, for sure. Like absolutely, that's immigration has happened and we're going to talk about that as well. Like, you know, how the relationship between federal, provincial and municipal government, what's the connection is there? How they communicate with each other? At the same time, like, you know, sometime it happens like, feels like, you know, in news media and local experiences that they're not talking to each other. And the plans get made, which is like a federal government is bringing the immigration, but provincial have responsibility for housing and municipal. And it's a challenge when the communication doesn't happen. So with that, like, you know, I also want to know from Scott, like, and what's your role as a town councillor for Ward Seven?
As a town councillor, I think it's quite easy. So you know, when you open your door, so when you see the road, you see the trees, you see the park and the library, company center, that's all belongs to the town. Town managing all those operations.
Right.
It's kind of your daily lives, a lot of connect. That's the town responsibility. As well, we will monitor, we will oversee the business running by town of Oakville and a lot of like local storm, stormwater management.
Yes.
Public transit.
Right.
Libraries. This is all in our duty. So we can represent our residents to monitor, to make sure all this town service is efficiently and is wider to everybody.
Well, you are brave enough. I can say that. Because I know like in how the town councillor, regional town councillors get the beating from the public. Sometimes you forget about like how much great work and the volunteer work you have done before in order to reach over there and putting like in the community first, right? And that's what you're doing it. But at the same time, a lot of time, unfortunately, like we forget about that, like, you know, what kind of work you're doing. But when you're in that position, like, and just like in the customer service of any company, they are the first one who get the complaints. And when it doesn't get solved, they get blamed, not the company, that what you're doing, you know? So I kudos to both of you. I know, I know Nav, you were involved in chair as in Odenawi. And I was in the council as well. And I've seen you like, you know, from the starting, like in the relationship you built up with the Halton School Board and builders and community, you're trying to bring it together, right? And I think like that's the, any successful town councillor or region councillor has done, like, you know, even the previous councillors, like they have the fantastic job. And that's what I like about the community as well, that the, it's very engaging. When we were in the school, I remember like, you know, parents in school, and that's what made the Odenawi one of the best school in Oakville, because people were engaged, right? So thank you for that and really appreciate that. So now it's coming to like, you know, my, my, my genre is like a real estate. I love talking about real estate. I love talking about development. As much I want to sell houses, I also feel sad when the green go away, right? But you know what? Some of the reality, like, you know, some things we have to compromise. A lot of people say like in North Oakville is not even Oakville. And I feel like sad about it. And but at the same time, no, it's, it's, it's developing, it's growing, it's changing, just like anything else, like a nature is changing. So my question to you is like a local governments and real estate. Could you elaborate on how decisions made by the local government, including zoning and development policies, impact their real estate landscape in Oakville?
So what we look at as a council is, we look at official plans that are made. And as you said earlier, the official plans for North Oakville were made twenty years ago.
Right, right.
And then throughout the years, you have to make some changes, right? But they're looking at the future. They're looking at what the future needs, what the community needs are, what are the services that are needed? And how we're going to establish all that with the newcomers or with the growth of the population. So at council, we have to make decisions into the future. So we're looking into the future of what our plans are going to be. Unfortunately now though, with Bill twenty-three coming in, some of our decision-making powers have been taken away.
Right. Just like what? Sorry to interrupt you. Like on Bill twenty-three, if you for audience, you can say like what Bill twenty-three is and what changes happen in terms of like.
So they've taken some of our decision-making powers away.
And when they're talking about they is.
The provincial government.
Provincial government, okay.
So the provincial government has put in Bill twenty-three, which reduces some of our decision-making powers at the municipal level. They're looking at building 1.5 million homes in the province in the next ten years. That's put in additional pressure on our municipalities locally. But in addition to that, we have less powers in terms of what is getting built now. So we no longer have powers on site plan. So once it gets to the site plan, those decisions are directly made through our planning department and through the province.
Okay.
And so we no longer can make changes at that level. So now we have to start at the top, at the beginning. So for example, we now have a committee for our midtown. We're trying to make a decision on what's going to be developed in midtown, what height restrictions we should have. And where we go, what's going to be the best for the community?
Oh, for sure.
So with that, we can actually make a decision. So now we know where we're able to hold the power.
Right.
And, and how we're making it sustainable, how we're going to provide services for our community and for the residents. And one of the biggest things for me is quality of life.
Right.
Quality, we can build homes. We can build, build, build.
And that's a, and that's a challenge, right? But so many people coming in and there's no restriction where they want to live and shouldn't be. Is the challenge is like a balancing, it's like a balancing act. Quantity versus quality, like, you know, they want to build houses pretty fast. At the same time, we don't want to lose that quality. That's why people move to Oakville, right? It's one of the best city to live, town actually, like it's still town. I know, like, I don't think we ever want to change that town to city. But, and, and that's, I can understand that's a challenge. But at the ground level, when we don't know how the system works and what are the challenges are, we are just easy to blame, right? And these day like a social media, you're full of, you know, naysayers, all the frustrations come out. But also looking into like, you know, how much hard work being done behind the scenes from each councillors, mayor and everyone. It's not like they're just sitting on the throne and just giving the order. You have to look into it. And sometime, I know you get the challenges as well, that people ask those questions to you, which you don't have an answer at that moment. And also at the same time, you know, they have some issues which you can take it over there, you presenting your case over there, but in overall scenario, what you said, because the plan was made before that, it's not, in the broader sense, it's not feasible.
Yes.
To bring those ones, right? So is that clear?
That's right.
Yes, it's correct. Like you said, we just got into the role.
Yeah.
It's our first year coming up. And prior to that, decisions that were made, we, we can't reverse those.
For sure.
So to speak. They are the decisions that were made by previous council many, many years ago even, in fact. And what we're doing is we're learning from that. So when we advocate now, when we're looking at new official plans.
Right.
We're trying to learn from, not the mistakes, but sort of what worked and what didn't work.
Correct.
You know, and, and we know that development needs to be there.
Right.
We know that we need development. We know we need more housing. We need sustainable housing. We need affordable housing. We, we understand all that. We want it to be responsible.
Right.
So we're looking at responsible housing.
Well, the good thing is because you work in the ground level and Scott, like you work in the ground level and looking into the, because we have the diverse community, right? And in diverse community, like, you know, everybody have a different, you know, needs or understanding how they want things in, in that community, right? And that's what they're approaching. I remember when we were in the school council, people saying, why come my kid don't bring homework to home? Right? And both like, you know, I look into not pointing out, like, you know, I'm, but most of the Asian communities, like, you know, Asian families, like, you know, they are very good with their kids, like the kids' education. Like, and that's what they focus on. And most of us, like, we moved over here because of that, because we had the great education system. But also same time, we're coming out from such a hard place where, you know, kids need to study. If they don't come and study two hours after, after their school, that means like they're not studying because they have to do the homework. So anyway, I know both coming from their hardworking families. And they understand, you understand your community. I love the mix over here that we have from two different communities, people coming in together and sharing the ideas and sharing, bringing the common ground, like what can help everyone else, right? So that's great. So Scott, like, you know, what you have to say about inclusive housing practices? Can we share some of the policies and initiatives aimed at ensuring responsible and inclusive housing practices in Oakville? And we're talking about the affordable housing and serving everyone, which is like a challenge. But do you have something to share?
Okay, thank you. So before I go into your question about this, I should add, there's some more information about Bill twenty-three.
Right.
So like in Oakville, so based on the Bill twenty-three, so we have to contribute another thirty-three thousand new houses in the tax, in the next ten years.
Oh, really?
Plus our pipeline, we have nineteen hundred already housing. So that's will be as almost fifty-five thousand new homes in next ten years.
Right.
So now recently, I think based on the data last year, so we normally approve, our department approve around two thousand new unit.
Right.
Per year.
Yeah.
But if go to that number, plus we played to our Bill twenty-three, that's will be at least a double speed about that.
Right.
New homes, new unit every year.
Yeah.
That's a big challenge for our whole town.
Right.
Yeah. This is now, what I say, this is a, because the provincial government take off some responsibility and the power from us. So that's something is big challenge for us to face all those numbers.
Right.
New buildings and the pipeline as well as.
Well, the thing is like, and I can understand that because the, whenever anything's changing, it's not taking place right away. It takes some time and the impact you will see in like, you know, two, three, four, five years, even ten years after that. Like we seeing the impact what was planning was made right now, twenty years ago. And then, and it's changed few things. But also the time, time when the planning was done, I don't think they believe like what the demographic is coming over here. What kind of people will be coming over here and what their requirement is going to be. And adjusting that, like, you know, it's, it's, it's a balancing act. But I'm proud of myself, like, you know, I'm just bragging because before that I was saying like it's a fifty thousand houses, like that's what we're looking into, right? And fifty-five thousand, so I'm good, like in the five thousand houses more. So more development is happening. But the challenge is always is like, you know, having that infrastructures. Our roads are supportive, our enough parking, talking about the parking. I know you have, we, we talk about that like before as well, the development was going on in the front of Dundas. And, and also the house is cool capacity, like, you know, we have eighteen, right now David, David, we have twenty-four.
At Odenawi, we have sixteen portables.
Right.
And at Dr. David R. Williams, we have twenty-four portable.
I know, I just heard that.
So it's, it's become very difficult, a lot of pressure on the community again.
Right.
And in terms of parking, there's a lack of parking. And the transportation in terms of buses, it's not at the level that we expected to be at in Ward Seven right now, north of Dundas. Which means that communities and residents are still using two or three cars per household. So parking has become a huge issue. You know, we're looking at developers who are developing for the future. We've seen some developments where they don't want to put a parking per unit. But if we don't, if we don't have that, we're going to have huge issues as to why, you know, how are we supposed to have a unit? Most people, especially during the area of the goal station, transit corridor, where a lot of people are going to be expected to, you know, go downtown on the go. However, when they come home, they may have to take their kids to hockey or swimming. And that's going to require motor vehicles.
Oh, for sure.
That's going to require parking. So if we have a lot of condos going up and we have units and due to lack of affordability.
Yeah.
If they're not able to live in houses and they're now living in units, they're still going to require cars.
Oh, for sure.
And I'm sorry, I need to add that because now you cannot believe, so there is a new policy, that's not new policy from the provincial.
Right.
If, if project have one public transportation arrangement already, so have a bus there stop. So it's no longer to think about the parking law per unit. They, they, they take off this consideration for those design. They think because they encourage the people, oh, you use a public transportation, no need to have a car. So that's, we got several application, that's, we have a five hundred unit, maybe only four hundred parking lot. They say, oh, there is a hundred people, they don't need the car.
Right.
To do this stuff because they have one stop, one bus stop there. And that for this is also can look, if it's no need to permit to get an eleven-story room.
Right.
On the condo building, besides the public transportation arrangement already there. So that's something, the reality is when those new development coming, application there, so we can see, there is always parking issue, that's not said.
Yeah.
It's just putting more pressure on the community again.
For sure.
We have more people coming in, but it's, it's new families. So you still have kids, kids still need to go places. And, and it's not reasonable to just say that the whole family is going to take transit to wherever they need to go.
Right. And that was my, you know, I, I know we were doing the advocacy about the parking and with the new buildings coming out, like in Dundas and now the carding mill area. And I know like in the whole community, when the previous councillors and everything, trying to build the builders together, do the presentation, able to reduce like some of the, you know, units, I believe, on those ones to accommodate that. But initially, if I look into that, the planning and everything for the town, when this community was developed, they were thinking about is going to be a walking community.
Yes.
Right?
Complete community.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So I, I think like the similar thing what they're doing on the square one, right? So now the LRT and everything coming out to support everything in there. But in terms of like a residential area like us, it's very tricky. And that was thinking like, you know, it's not the foresight to look into that, okay, provide the transportation at least, so people can commute from, you know, from house to it. And most of us, like, you know, people coming, immigrants from Asia, they didn't come from like a warm countries. For, for winter, it's harsh for them.
Yeah, absolutely.
And they can't even think about like, you know, I'm living over here for like twenty-three years, so now I'm used to it. Like, and I can walk in my shorts and sixteen degree, no problem, minus sixteen, sorry. But no, I will, I will, that's a lie. That's a lie. But yeah, the, the thing is, just giving the example is, is, it's demographic and people are not used to that one. But at the same time, giving some credit to, not the credit, like basically, when they're planning, they would never thought about that, like that kind of demographics will be coming. And most of the people coming from Middle East, where like they didn't even drive car before they have a chauffeur, right? Even back in India, like, you know, it's a lot of people in China, like the same thing, a lot of people, like, you know, didn't have that harsh winter experience.
Yeah.
So that make it challenging. Coming to that, like, you know, let's base, talk about the sustainable development. And what strategies and initiatives are in place to promote sustainable and community-focused real estate development within the town? So.
So obviously, one of the things that we're looking at is reducing our greenhouse emissions, right? We, we want to make it more sustainable to make development. We want to protect our green space, you know? And the community needs to work together to do their part, right? Turn off the lights, you know, use less energy when we need to, you know? People are trying to use solar panels wherever they can, right? But, but we were talking about green space earlier, right?
Yeah.
We really want to protect our green space.
And a good thing to see, like, you know, now the energy-saving housing are coming over here, the materials which get to use is very, you know, energy efficient, less heat, water heater and furnaces, like getting more efficient and everything. But even with that, like, you know, we have to lose, use less. But people say that, you know, I have money, I can spend. What's the problem, right?
Open the blinds, let the natural light in, you know?
Oh, I love that.
The natural sun, sunshine.
Oh, I love that. Like in any house I go to.
This is where we want to work together as a community.
Yeah. So we can do as a community, get a lot of stuff, but I know people's, people are busy and a lot of time, like, you know, town is looking for the input from people and out of like those six thousand, seven thousand residences, right? And we might get five, ten people to come to that meeting, which is a challenge.
Yes.
I work with the local board, so even like, you know, we have twenty-two hundred Realtors approximately. And then even from there, like we get fifty, sixty, so it's not bad. Sometimes, but it's challenging. I know people wants to, went out and want something. But a lot of people don't even know what the system, who they go, where they go, how they can report things. And I think, you know, town have like all the systems in there. But the first thing happening is easy to come and say, hey, this is not done, my road is not clean.
That's right.
You get it done right now. It seems like, you know, you're sitting over there and just push the button, somebody go and clean it, right? So what are the system in place? Just information again. I know like a lot of people know, but it's, I also doing it like the informative ones, when people have the idea, like, what's the best approach for people when they have these kind of issues? So for example, like my snow is not getting cleared, winter is coming, we're prepared. What, what they have to do?
So Scott and I have been champions and we've been advocating any issue that comes to us. And, and we've always said from the beginning, we're here, reach out to us, you know, in any way means that you see fit. And we do send it to our town staff.
Right.
We know that snow, snow removal has been a huge issue. So Scott and I have asked again in our budget to put windrow service. We've been listening to our resident and we understand the concerns and there's many concerns. And we're trying to do the best we can to advocate for those issues.
Right.
You know, as you said, it's been going on for a long time.
It is.
And it, it's, you know, we have to work together. So we bring these issues to our town staff to make them understand that these are issues for us as well. So as a resident, you know, as you were saying, you know, I've been living in Ward Seven for the last ten years. We've known each other for around that time. When the school first got built, you know, it was kind of the hub of the community, then development started and then we needed services.
For sure.
So now these are services that are coming up, you know, all these issues that are coming up. And, and that's where we have to see how was planning done there? And how can we improve planning for future developments?
That's, that's very great point which you bring out, like, you know, we, I know I was frustrated when the school was open and we were just live less than kilometer from the school. Before initially, because the development was going on, there was a bus service and when they stopped.
For two years, yes.
We have to walk through the mud to go to school and the dust was around it. And the one thing which we try to do like an initiative is bring all three parties together because we're getting, it's, it's because of them, it's because of them, Halton School Bus, Halton School, then town and builder. And nobody wants to come on the one table. And I think like that was a challenge and was frustration for most of us. But the same time as we grow and I understood, because we are frustrated, but sometime we have to look to that, this is a settling community. It's not the settled community. So if you're comparing this one to Mississauga or like other developed cities or towns, it's not fair because it's, it's different.
And we're looking at growing pains.
And we're looking into growing pains, like, you know.
There are growing pains.
And the reason I know about that because I serve in old GTA. So I know areas where have these issues and then I can look into it. So I have a little bit wider vision. But also people who have moved from the other places to here and they move from like a developed place to developing area. You're going to have those challenges for sure. Future is brighter. And I can see like a new, fresh, talking about fresh, we have sixteen miles sports complex that's coming along pretty well.
That's right. That's right.
So that's good. Like, you know, what, what are we going to have there? I know, I know, what's going to be there? I'm very curious.
Our world will have the largest, most modern and the most updated facility, community and library in the.
In Oakville, yeah.
So we got a big pool, we got a, we got a library, we got a function room, you can play ping pong, table tennis. There's a lot of things, badminton, and we got a north, we call the north sports park.
Right.
That's on the north side of this new facility that will be the newer.
Sports fields.
Yeah, that's will be coming next spring.
Yeah. I'm excited about cricket.
Cricket.
Cricket, please.
That's a full-size cricket, cricket field. It can be a national, national competition as well, yeah.
Wow, yeah, yeah. I, I know like there's like a lot of cricket lovers and it's a growing sport in Canada.
Yes.
At the same time, there's another growing sport is pickleball.
Pickleball. That's what we're just going to say. Those are the two we hear.
Yeah.
We hear of pickleball and cricket, please get us the facilities.
Oh, for sure, for sure, and uh you know, I'm pretty excited about that, like, you know, at the same time is going to bring pressure on infrastructure as well. And I think like roads are widening and things are happening uh to get there intersection. But like, you know, it's it's pretty excitement, like a lot of development, it takes time, I think like it's got delayed.
And these are the exciting parts, you know, apart from all the issues that we have. Um we wanna look at what's exciting for our community and you know, what's great. And some of these infrastructures, yes, it's taken a long time to bring them in.
Right.
Um you know, schools took a long time, you know, services, um you know, now the community center. But once it's built, it'll 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 serve all of Oakville.
Yeah.
You know, just as Ward Seven residents have had to go south um for classes to take their kids. Um now we'll have a state of the art facility, which we can have tournaments, you know, which we can have uh different sports, you know.
Yeah, so we're not only serving the local community, we actually serving not only uh town, but province as well as national level.
Yes.
Um which is great, like, you know, it's a go to destination kind of uh that's happening, which is exciting. Which bring the great things for our uh businesses around, like and there's a lot of local businesses coming in. I'm going to come to that question, uh but before, but before staying there, like, you know, we have challenges, we have some solutions. So based on that, what are the some key challenges faced by Oakville in balancing real estate development? Uh with community needs and how are these challenges being addressed? Um so that's.
I think the housing, the housing is a big challenge for the whole province and.
Affordable housing.
That's right, affordable housing, so I can share, there's one data here.
Yeah.
So now is province of the average, the housing price nine hundred twenty three thousand.
Mm hmm.
That's end of twenty twenty one.
Wow.
So go back to ten years ago, the average price, three hundred twenty nine thousand.
Right.
So this is like jumped almost one hundred eighty percent.
Right.
About this.
But this is twenty twenty one data, right?
Yeah, twenty one, twenty one.
Right, you know what the data right now?
That's yours.
Well, it's it's uh it's crazy, like, you know, it's uh above one point two.
Wow.
Right, so you can't even get the, you know, anybody is asking, can I get the townhouse or anything less than million? You can't get anything less than million, except like in the condo apartments and that's also, you're looking to one plus one, two, even two bedrooms, like it's like nine hundred.
Yeah.
Even though the market is a little bit down right now, uh so development was happening. But one thing didn't happen in all this thing, that's the another positive thing during this is uh price didn't go down that much.
No.
Um what people were expecting is going to crash, it's going to happen this, there's some challenges. But um talking about the other challenges, I I'm sorry, I diverted, when it's got real estate, it's it's me, right? So uh so the key challenges, what you're facing is about the housing, affordable housing. And what municipal as a regional, because you meet with the other regional counselors as well from Halton region. Um and and I was talking to Colin Best, a regional town counselor, he's one of the, he's used to be a realtor as well, so he understand.
Yes.
Uh the Milton, it's fastest growing community, right?
Yes.
Uh right now, it came out the news, the Halton Hills is one of the destination one as well.
Of course.
So coordinating between that and the challenges, I think a very common challenges we have as a region. But what are the, we talking about solutions? I love to talk about solutions, the challenge is always there, but what we can do, what the town can do, one community can do in order to um. You know, face that challenges.
Yeah, so recently, the town council, we were working on the, there is a report coming out recently.
Right.
So that's called uh the Enteral Housing Affordability Task Force.
Mm hmm.
So we are doing some research and in next council meeting, so we will be talking about to think about all those recommendation from those report.
Hmm.
So and we can find out, so what town we can do and as well, I believe the region also think about this. So how region can the works, uh three level government to work together to facing all those uh affordable housing crisis. So how we use those data and the research to uh imple- implementing our town strategy and the region strategy as well.
Right, right, I I I know, like, you know, the both province uh and federal, I just had the round table. Uh housing issues, like uh Oakville Milton Restaurant Board was involved in there, like in the sixteen mile, they did, I think it's September ninth or something. And that communication is happening, I heard from F E as well, you know, all the, so big talks are happening, uh which is good. Uh what I would like to see, like, you know, every party, like, come to table, like, look into this emergency. Because when we announce like a four hundred fifty thousand people coming every year and we are one point five million houses short. In uh in our province. Uh and that another challenge is, like, you know, we don't have enough uh trade to build those houses as well. Uh so I think like, you know, when uh bill, what's uh twenty three. Uh it's all about like cutting out that red tape, like that's what they coming out and how can make it efficient. But when you're cutting out that as well, there's another challenges, right?
Yes, yes.
Um so what are the solutions um we're looking for?
So one of the things that uh even a couple of weeks ago, there was an announcement made that the government of the federal, provincial and the regional.
Hmm.
Um they announced forty five million dollars in funding um to construct fifty two affordable housing. Um here.
Fifty two?
Yeah, fifty two affordable housing units in Oakville. So that that's on um Kerr Street and it's for seniors living. No, it's it's not enough, but what we're looking at is um we're advocating to our provincial and federal partners. That for us to do this on the regional side, we're we're trying to help with affordable housing.
Hmm.
So wherever we can find an opportunity, wherever our um partners can find opportunity, we're trying to grab it.
Right.
Because we're like, this is what we're gonna need. And one of the things we're sort of asking, and I've done this at council meetings, um for developers is. Looking into when you're building condos.
Right.
Um to look at two and three bedrooms.
Hmm.
I and we understand, you know, building and the expensive.
Real estate is so expensive.
But one of the things that we've seen in North Oakville.
Right.
In Ward Seven is a lot of families um are living in multi generational families.
Right.
So you know, people per unit is actually a lot higher than we think, which is the reason we've had issues.
Which is like some allowed, right, the safety purpose, right?
Yes, and then so what we're looking at is if there's a lack of affordability, where we're seeing families now. Um with children going to schools are actually living in the condos and not detached homes.
Right.
We're starting to see another trend.
Mm hmm.
So if we need builders and developers to build for the future and in terms of our children being able to afford. They may not be able to afford to live in a detached home or maybe not even a townhome.
Uh.
So if they're gonna go into a condo and they're gonna have more than two people. Um they're not gonna be starter homes anymore, they're actually gonna be their homes. Which means we need to be able to accommodate that demographic.
Right.
So if the future is towards having affordability and making these homes. Then again, we need to look at maybe building bigger units, because the units.
Different music, multi, multi level unit.
Multi level units.
Yeah.
And so we gotta look, so you know, that's one of the things I have asked at council for some developers is that. Can we look at the percentage of what two and three units are?
Hmm.
Um because.
Way less.
I I it's 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 very less, but there needs to be an understanding and this is where, you know, we've come out and said, come and look at Ward Seven.
Right.
Come and and, you know, look at the studies we've asked our town staff and others. Um you know, to report on what worked and what didn't work and and where we're at. In terms of services, are we gonna be able to catch up?
Yeah.
You know, we're building the schools now, but are we going to be able to build them fast enough, um you know, in relation to development?
Well, the challenge is always like, you know, we, I know we talking about like in several years now, like since two thousand fifteen at least. Um that, you know, we not having enough schools. Um the community is growing so fast and everything, those are things, like, you know, we talk about different solution, like, you know, you advocating a lot about school. Um Scott, like, you know, you're working on a lot of stuff behind the scenes as well, uh and you always the advocate for that. But ultimately, those are the challenges happening and I I I couldn't understand this, still the system, how it works. That town has a lot, the, you know, now seeing as the province is allotted the place and then the school have to apply for this funding. Uh sorry, board have to apply for the funding and then it takes process and take year or two. For in school, like, it take two years to make and then.
Elementary, you need two years.
Yeah, two years.
Elementary, yeah.
Elementary, two years and high school like three years.
Three years.
And then if the site change.
Yes.
And we're behind six years. So those are some.
So so those are some of the things, challenges that we want them to look for future. One of the things I've said is that now it's great that the community center is getting built.
Hmm.
But myself, being a family that moved there almost ten years ago, um it skipped a generation.
It did.
So for our children and for your children as well, they will no longer require.
I was thinking, I was thinking, when we moved over here in two thousand twelve, that was a phase one. Uh we moved over here, my daughter was in grade three that time, but by the time she will come to high school, she'll be going to the new high school.
Yes.
Guess what? She's in grade eleven right now.
And she won't go to the.
And uh in the high school, forget about that, like, you know, she will never see the face. Um uh probably she will go to university by that time, the school is get built. Um so I know like in a lot of challenges with COVID, also delayed the process, side thing and everything. And this is kind of thing, like, you know, I wish we can improve on. And I know you pushing it because it make your job difficult at the same time. It's not like, you know, you want to hold it, it's going to get the personal benefit from that, like, you're not getting any personal benefit from that. So everybody wants to work hard and everything, but it's come to um when it's come to like, you know, making decisions. Uh depending upon how other people see it. So like, for example, in the South Oakville or the Central Oakville, they have different issues and problems. They're not facing the same issues and problems, what we facing? So and I think like, we talked about Scott as well before, that first year developing that relationship with your fellow counselors. Uh and making them understand what are the challenges are.
Yeah.
And it's not like the other bigger issues than what they might have in central or South Oakville, right? They have issues as well, like a big time, uh no doubt about it, it's like, you know, um developed community and it's like a changing. It's actually generation is changing, housing types are changing. I look into the Bridge Road, I looked into Rebecca, it's not the same what it's used to be, right?
That's right, yes. For example, that's uh the snowbank, so like the, that's totally different in our world. Because our world is more narrow street and more dense.
Right.
Than the south, so the problem is that all those, when you remove those snow, we don't have enough place to store those snow.
Right.
So that's make our uh snow windshield is more higher, bigger than the than on the south.
Right.
So a lot of our residents struggle about that, so it's totally different, so uh the requirement. So maybe rest in 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 south, they still need, but some of, some they don't need because they have enough space to store. Then the windshield is look like smaller than us for sure.
Yeah.
So that's, as you say, the different world, different area have, the counselors and also the residents, they have a different.
Right.
And so it's through our personal experience.
Right.
That we're able to go back um to our town staff and go back to them to let them know that these are new challenges.
Right.
Are different challenges.
Right.
Um and and that's why our needs are different, you know, our needs might be different from south.
Right.
You know.
And for the snow things issue, Nav and I, we we ask, we advocate a lot, so we talk about that's on under.
Yeah.
Table meeting, we got a lot of meetings with our uh the different department.
Right.
So there is a challenge for us in Ward Seven, but so I said just now, we 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 have more density there. So we need to find a place far away maybe to store, to move those snow stored there.
To dump in there.
Then can make more space for us to clean those uh uh the snow windshield service, otherwise it's still not work.
Mm hmm.
But this is something new, this is only happening in our, in our world.
So this is, this is where, you know, when we, when reports come, we ask our staff to look at comparables.
Right.
To so to look at other municipalities in the area and what are some of the services that they're providing that could assist us?
Right.
You know, and then you look at similar communities and how they're dealing with certain challenges.
Right.
And how that can help us.
You know, that that's a great way, like, you know, learning from each other and learning from each other's mistakes as well, uh that's what you can do. And I know we talk about the midtown, the commu- the the committee being formed to look into the those challenges which happen in. In preserve area, like in uh other areas and that can make you help with that, right? Uh I know it's can be challenging and this, but solutions are there and I think like, if everyone work together. And they're not pulling each other and say like, you know, it's just looking into their vested interest, then it make it easier. So my question to you is like, you know, I know you get uh community engagement. We are, we have engagement uh with the community, but how do you uh actively engage? Uh with the Oakville community to gather input and feedback on real estate related decisions? Uh I know you can doing over here, we talking about it, you hearing all those pains. Um but what are the other ways, like what you initiatives, you taking uh Scott uh to reaching out the community and outreach and to hear them?
I I think Nav and I, we are, we are very active in our social media and we engage a lot.
But sometime people complain like, you know, it's you're just, you're there just a photo because you're so good looking.
Yeah. But this is a some way, so we are, we open to our residents. So you you can always through the formal channels, write an email, give us call to to report any issues, concern. And also we use our social media to broadcast our uh new policy, new event or something to happen in our town and in in our world. Especially if we, this challenges things, how to engage, as Nav and I, we we represent, I represent the Chinese uh uh community. And I represent Hindu and Sikh uh community as well, Indian, so this is.
But you're you're also representing every other community.
Exactly.
Because I I I don't think, I don't see if anybody who's coming from Middle East or coming all like the, you know. Uh Canadian born and brought over here, you're going to treat them differently, it's not.
For sure.
But the only, I think like what helps you guys is knowing their uh culture, um knowing their language.
Yes.
It it helps because.
And being a liaison between.
Yeah.
Our role and them as newcomers.
Right.
And the challenges that they're facing in terms of settling.
Right.
It's helped us, one of the things that Scott and I have both had to do because of, you know, um difficulty communication, language barriers. We've been able to communicate in our respective languages, especially with seniors.
Yes.
And you know, we've done a lot of work, Scott's done a lot of work with the seniors in his community as well. We've had seniors um come from our community to ask for certain services, but they don't know the channels.
Yes.
You know, so these are, these may seem like small things, but they make a big impact.
For sure.
For the communities, you know, and and if we're not able to do it. Um if there's a community where we're we're not able to communicate, we will find someone, you know. We we will, we will ensure that whatever they require, that somehow they'll be able to get it.
Yeah.
That's right.
No.
Yeah, because a lot of in our world, we, there's a lot of families, newcomers and then they're visible minorities.
Right.
People, so as I said and I've said, mentioned about, so the language and culture barrier, so there is something. They don't know how to efficiently communicate, they don't know what's the channel they can find, they don't know what the resources they can use. So for us, so we understand the background, we understand their needs, so it's easy to access to them. And to bring those concerns to back to the town and to make sure every residence, they, there's concern, there is required. Should be heard.
Right.
And should be considered about, let's make our, all the people, rather, whatever you come from.
Yeah.
What the, what the language you are speaking at, what what's the belief you have, we treat it as well, everybody is equal. We ch- we want to make this.
We we are, we are the land of like immigrants who are here, right? And we have the similar challenges and everything, doesn't matter where we came from. And and that's what I love about this country and it's like a multiculturalism, right?
It's welcoming, you know, a welcoming community.
I I love to go on the Chinese uh New Year and I like those dumplings and especially I like those uh. Uh when I go in the Chinese restaurant, like, my thing is ticking off.
Oh, the lucky.
Lucky.
The lucky cookie.
I love that, fortune cookie, that, I love that. Uh at the same time, I see you like, you uh, did you learn any Bangra yet?
I will try.
You will try?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh well, that's a fun part, like, you know, having, we have so much to celebrate together. Um. Um, but coming to like, you know, uh, community engagement, what advice you want to give somebody who just move in the community? And how they can get more engaged in the community and community matters, problems they're coming out? What's the best way of like, I know, like, you know, you guys, your, your phone numbers are and emails are publicly given to them. Uh, but like, what's the best way, like, you know, to reach out to you rather than wanting out social media? What's the effective way of things getting done? What do you, what do you recommend them?
Well, reach out to us as we said on our um, you know, emails or, you know, if you have our numbers, give us a call. But we will try to help you provide resources.
Right.
Um, you know, you can, you can look online, you know, town of Oakville, you can look at the resources there, region of Halton. Um, you know, there's a lot of resources in terms of newcomers, in terms of assimilating into the community. Um, schools are an issue and we get these questions regularly.
Yeah.
So we're able to provide, you know, the resources you need or the contacts that you require for whatever issue or need you have. Um, you know, we're transparent in what is our responsibility, what is not.
Yeah.
Um, you know, and i- if it's not, we, we will help you find those um, stakeholders in the community. You know, we, we've built our relationship on having all the stakeholders work together.
Right.
You know, we worked um, just recently on the auto theft issue.
Hmm.
You know, it, it's not our um, area as municipal leaders, as counselors. But um, you know, more with our counterparts on provincial.
Oh, so it's.
Provincial and federal.
Yeah.
But what we did recently was, you know, with the growing concerns of safety within our community, um, we recently, a few weeks ago, had a meeting on auto theft and, and we did one six months before that.
Right.
Um, and we brought all the partners together, we bought the federal, the provincial, Halton Police, you know?
Insurance.
And insurance companies, you know, we brought everyone together because we know it's a growing issue. So although it's not our mandate and we're not able to do the things that our counterparts are able to do, we want to show the community that we want to stay involved, you know?
More than, more than showing is like, you know, I think like, you know, some of your neighborhood uh, thing happened, right, on your street happened. Uh, and that's like in the way, kind of embarrassing as well, like, you know, it's happening right and then and there. Uh, and these, these are the challenges, like in the covid have brought like a lot of challenges. Uh, I think like the base, basic, big reform we need to do is like, you know, laws, right? Um, in coming out, like, you know, how people getting out so quickly, even real reforms and everything. Uh, we're going, uh, talking about that, like Iran, our ex-cop, it's uh, it's going to be here um, in couple of weeks. Uh, we're doing the podcast together, he's a podcaster himself, uh, great speaker. Uh, but I like his enthusiasm, like, you know, how much he do the community. So we're trying to bring over here the how small community can come together and all those expertise and uh, I know there's tons of people who are quietly do their work uh, behind the scenes. Not everybody is like, like in the show off, um, just like uh, all the uh, awards and help uh, are able to get from. Thing is, that's appreciation, I didn't do for that because I live there, care for the community. But the same time, like, you know, you, I like it, like, when it's inspiring others to do that kind of stuff, right? So the whole purpose is take to inspire the community to live well, right? Uh, proud of your community, but it's not going to come out just from one, like in the town or just your counselor. You have to get involved, you have to do your part as well. Um, and that's how we can build together.
Exactly.
Right, the better community.
Exactly.
That's right.
So.
And I, I need to add up, so as, to talk about still the, the community engagement and community belongings. So Nav and I, we uh, we really, we hold some specific topic town hall, like not just to say that's auto thefts.
Right, yeah.
For that we do, we bring all the three level government and bring all those counter factors to, to uh, stakeholders to talk about speci- specific issues, concerns, which our community to think about it.
Right.
So that's auto safe, the community safety and the schools as well, right? And what other else about the community engagement? So Nav and I, we organize several, not only cultural event, but also we will plan in the future as well to get a more engaged event, con- include the town hall, include the regular communications through social media and the email and the official channels. But also we can still do a lot of community, street event or something, even.
That's the best way when you're meeting one-on-one, like, that's what I like about our, kind of, other day, I was just sitting on the Chuck's Roadhouse over here and uh, um, Sean O'Meara, he just walked in, um, I didn't recognize him because of long hair now.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm glad he survived the big accident he had, I came to know that day. Uh, and that was the kind of thing I like, like, you know, you just walk in, it's not like, you know, oh, town council coming, we official coming out, like, you know, back in our uh, country, like where they got the, even the right and the plate, that's the, that's a nephew of the town counselor. It's not like that. Uh, so I love that, like, and that's why, you know, uh, when you're coming in the podcast and we are the community. You know, it's, it's a role and the responsibility which you taking over. Uh, it's because you're proud of your community and you want to be engaged, you want to give. Um, but the same time, you know, a lot of challenges come out, like, you know, facing that. So kudos to you guys again. Um, and great job in getting the community engagement, I love to see more community reaching out to you. And I think these are the opportunities when people have in those cultural events. Um, they can talk about the issues, what they having, right? Um, when you said about the street parties and street stuff, our street is like, my, I live in a street like which is perfectly greatest street I can say in whole preserve. Uh, because I, we, sometime, you know, I was not here and wake up in the morning, my neighborhood already drive my, clean my driveway. Some people were jealous, um, but I'm, I'm okay with that. Unfortunately, it's all his house, so this year, hmm, I have to, uh, I have to do it. Yeah, start cleaning again. But we, we helping out each other, right? That's the thing, right? Anytime it happens and that's how you build a good community.
Yes.
Help out each other.
Yes.
There's an issue, you don't wait, somebody is going to come and they, you know, something are going to happen and when you blaming things and doing things, rather than get it done, you know? Get involved, get engaged, our kids want to do it.
Of course.
I know we always have the safety concerns, but at the same time, beyond, like, you know, having that safety uh, thing covered, uh, we can help out each other.
That's right.
That's right.
That's how we're going to do it.
And I need reminders, so our residents is one thing, so make sure you write an email to both us, but Nav and I, we are working relationship, we work as a partner, so the something, when, when you uh, raise your concern or report something, so each of us who will get an email first, who reply email first, then we will always copy, so both of us, we know what the issue. We, we guarantee we heard from you, it's not need to everybody to reply, re- repeat the same thing. So for example, you, you write Nav and Nav will reply, I know what happened.
Right.
We will talk our town staff to uh, have the right person to, to have the right resources to look at the issue.
Yep, yep.
It's not means, oh, no.
One response.
One respond, the other not respond, we always doing this, this work together to make more efficient. This is something like, write email to both us, Ward seven, that's easy.
Yeah, uh, I ca- I wanted the kudos to staff as well because I play tennis and George Savage. Um, and uh, you know, we have sometime issues, like sometime at the garbage issues, people throwing away, we did the clean drive.
Yes.
Um, and I can tell you, even that time when I did it, I couldn't believe eight o'clock in the morning, I send the email, within five minutes, I got back the reply. That's what going to happen, they're going to send someone. And, and kudos to, like, you know, I, I know Nav is here. Uh, but at the same time, I give the kudos to previous town counselors and regional counselors as well, they were active, like, they were doing it. So I know a lot of things, like, you know, this versus that happens, uh, to me, it doesn't matter. Uh, to me, it's matters, like, you know, who's working for the community and what they're doing and giving that full credit to them, like how hard they're working about the community. So, you know, I'm knowing you, like, and I see you as a from the very starting, like, you know, how you work, uh, what your work ethics are and how much you talk about the community and everything, it's that's to me, that's enough. Uh, to me, it doesn't matter which race, which uh, religion, which everything is coming out. If you're doing something positive for the community, I'm there. I'm there and that's how I get supported as well. Uh, and the reason you guys over here uh, today is like, you know, it's taking your precious time to talk to me is because you know, I, I, I think good about the community, right? And together we can work, like, and that's what we talk about.
Yeah.
Um, every time. So we talk about that, like, and now I want to you know your personal insights. Can you uh, both share a personal experience or story related to your roles uh, as regional town counselor that had a significant impact on the Oakville community? I know I already talked about so much, uh, maybe we can just do the one line, like, and that's what you think your uh, personal goal or mission or vision uh, for future of Oakville and our town, our ward at least.
I think the main thing is listening to our residents.
Right.
Um, communication is key. Um, I think one of the personal experiences that I've had is, you know, particular concern of the residents which involved traffic calming, you know, and
Speeding?
Speeding and um, issues that we were looking at with our staff, looking at doing some traffic studies. But I was able to give a little bit of insight as an actual resident.
Hmm.
Using that road.
Right.
And um, you know, trying to explain that the reason the residents were frustrated. So we understand that our staff is looking at all of Oakville.
Hmm.
We're representing our area, but they have to, and they may not immediately understand what the challenges are. So I was able to expedite some traffic calming measures.
Yeah.
Um, knowing that there's a different reason why this is required and it's not just by, you know, the procedures at hand, but there might be a different reason.
By the way, I love those pedestrian, pedestrian lights now.
Yes.
That's, that's, I was advocating for that like a long time back as well. I'm glad it came because it was in South Oakville and now it came in and it's, I, I hope like that will help. Uh, but the same time, everyone have to take their responsibility.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Uh, rules and regulations and laws are going to be there, but if you're not stopping and just scrolling and say, how much time you going to save? You know, probably a few seconds, minute maybe?
Yeah.
Right? But if you hit somebody, how much time and maybe somebody's life, I hope not, can you be wasted, right? So be careful.
So we're looking at more traffic calming measures, some stop signs coming in, some um, calming measures as I said. Um, because we know that this is what the community needs.
Right.
And um, our staff has been wonderful. They're very good in getting the studies up and, you know, started and looking into what is the best for the community.
So here's a question for you and looking to, you know, insight to our listeners and people who watching is about how much staff is there? And anytime this come out, like, you know, it goes in the queue, like in the Ward seven, have a separate, you know, kind of like a staff who's dealing with that dedicated one, or it's a one common for the whole Oakville? And they're looking to the, all the parks and stuff like, for example, right? So for maintenance.
So they, so they have their specific departments.
Okay.
You know, for transportation, for parks and rec, for, you know, road safety.
And parks and recreation have the, all the staff like was taking care of whole.
So each, each, um, yeah, each area has their staff.
Right.
Um, but the staff are great in communicating our needs in each of our wards.
Yep.
So they're great in communicating, well, this is what we have right now, uh, these are the concerns that, that maybe town staff received that we didn't receive.
Right.
So the communication is great in letting us know, um, we're going to be doing a study here.
Yeah.
Or this came to our attention, or we'll bring something up where, um, you know, resident has brought up this issue. Can you please put this on your traffic study as well, or can you put this on, um, you know, your, your list um, of things that we need to look into or matters that, issues that we need to look into.
Perfect, perfect.
That's right. Yeah, so.
What's your vision and?
Yeah, for my uh, for my personal experience, I think to, to be a town council, is I agree with Nav about the communication is a key. So understand our residents' need, understand what they're concerned, understand what they're expected to make better community in our world. But as well, to be a counselor, us, we think about, we design about the future of the whole Oakville, not only for.
Yeah, that's right, that's right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So for example, so even go back to my last year campaign period, so I heard there's need, I heard those seniors. So I advocated with all the seniors, I'm, that's, I became the pioneers of a senior. So I, at that time, my uh, campaign platform, I'm, I just find want to uh, free ride for the seniors.
Right.
All the time, not only Monday.
Yeah.
So that's why when last year we did those budgeting issues, so I raised this uh, report and discussion on the council, I guess, include Nav to support. So we finally, we got the all seniors ride free every day, every time, no blackout time.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah, so this is something make significant change for the community. The, the seniors, we got a different, the feedback, it's really, really changed their daily routine. They can use.
Make it easy.
Very easy, otherwise there will be a lot of people, they will isolate at home because they cannot drive. They rely on us to drive for them to grocery store, to the, to the shopping mall, to, to see somewhere. But now they can use the public transit to go them, meet their friends.
Yeah.
Every day, they can go park, they can even do multi-transit, go to the Mississauga for some event or something.
Yeah.
So that's amazing.
Well, that's the other thing, like, you know, we need, like, you know, talk about if we saw, want to solve the housing issues. Uh, I think the biggest thing the government have to do, both federal and provincial, is having a good infrastructure.
Yes.
Interconnectivity.
Yep.
Uh, between towns and cities, like, and that will be really helpful. But before I say anything, like, you know, I want to thank you for having that passion about that. Um, seniors are near and dear to me a- as well, uh, at the same time, because a lot of peoples are coming over here and they don't know the language, um, and they, they struggle and they get frustrated. And then we have a eight months of winter when they sit inside and they can't do much, so it's really.
Mental health is very important.
It's a mental health, the basic, biggest thing.
Mental health is very important.
So when it look into like the small stuff like that, like, you know, just people say, oh, it's what, like in the free ride, what is going to do? In my opinion, like, that's a big, big, big thing, uh, because now you're making it connected to reach places, so they're not waiting for their kids to drive them.
Absolutely.
They already driving their kids to things and they're busy at work, sometimes they're working at home. Which is make it a little bit flexible these days, but yeah.
Locally, we also have our ride on demand program.
Right.
Which, you know, that was a help beforehand, that was a pilot, which it's become permanent now.
That's right.
Um, and then now including this, um, I have, it's also students that are able to ride free.
Right.
So now I have our children who are in high school, who are able to ride free on the transit as well. And, and that takes less pressure off us, for us to be able.
I can tell you, I te- I can tell you how many times my grade eleven, uh, she want to go with thing that now she said, don't worry, I'll go.
Yeah.
And she's going to from here to Oakville Place, Good Life.
That's right.
And go for gym or anything.
I don't need to drive my daughter four times for the school and that's initiative for the climate change.
That's right.
It, 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 and that's why, like, you know, so looking into the vision of that, like walking city or walking town or walking ward, we want to make uh, what the vision was, like, you know, but making them understand and also providing the alternative. And that was the challenge, I believe, because there was no alternative.
Yeah.
It was made that way, but there was no alternative to reach there, so it's a great initiative. Um, one thing which I just want to say, like, you know, we're going to close um, soon because we have a lot to talk about and we can talk over here a whole day, um, is about, um, it's, I'm not sure, but the, is there a Oakville app or something which make it easier for people, just click on a button and do the service? Because right now it's honestly, like, you know, it's going on the website, loading it, it's not loading it. Maybe it will make it easier and just a suggestion, maybe you can bring it out that, uh, how that work, that, just like, you know, I love that uh, app, like in the garbage one, it reminds me uh, what I have to do uh, for the garbage day these days. Uh, there's a Halton one as well, right?
Yes.
Um, for waste management and stuff. Um, so like, it's something like that for the Oakville, uh, we can just click on the button and we have the app downloaded and we can request everything in there.
This is a perfect example, we'll, we'll bring that to our town staff.
There you go.
And recently, Tang did upgrade their website.
They did, yes.
Yeah, so there's, for, for example, some, some apps, so I know Halton have those wasteful.
Yeah.
For the public. For the public transit, they are designing the new app about those uh transit on demand as well.
Right.
So we will coming out the, a lot of news, new things.
Right.
We how to, we use technology innovate, to improve our efficiency about our town service. This is something we are looking for and we always to raise this, like, from our world. So we want to have those, how we improve those service level.
How we make it easier for people, right?
Efficiency budget.
Efficiency, right.
Need the budget, so that's why Nav and I.
And it needs to be passed in the budget.
To the budget.
But here, here's my thing, when talk about budget, like, you know, I have the advocacy, like, when I did uh with the board, it was in there, it's looking into that. We investing on something which going to save us from other stuff.
Yeah.
So how much time we doing it over here, how we can make it effective, how we can make it easier, how we can make it like a hassle free. Convenient, like, things going, still going to take time, but the frustration like a lot of people have, it's who to reach out and I'm not getting respond. Or it's too, like, my internet is down, I cannot do this thing and that thing. And those are things, like, we, we are, we are living in instant gratification world.
That's right.
We need that instant, you know, extension span is like a two to three seconds, like in a reel, if I don't like it, just, just swipe it.
Yeah.
Right? So I know these are the some challenges and we talk about some solutions as well. Uh I know you guys going to advocate and will keep on doing everything.
Sure.
And I'll make sure, I'll make you guys accountable as well, just like uh any other community citizen, so. Thank you so much.
Thank you for you.
Thank you, this was such a great conversation.
Yeah.
You know, and and we want our viewers.
And good thing is, like, you know, we don't have to cut anything, like, we have this flow happen uh with thing and we feel comfortable and know you have some. Uh things like, you know, podcasts we're doing, doing, Scott was saying, I'm not wearing a jacket. And all that stuff, but it's like, you know, just relax, right? You know, we just having the conversation over here, we don't have to worry about. Uh how we look and everything, yeah, it's definitely sometimes, audio is the most important thing and I think he's doing a good job.
Yeah.
And I hope like you'll um hear this properly and if it's not, like, you know, you can always reach out to me and give us a feedback, how I can improve. In our next podcast. So thank you for watching and thank you again, Scott and Nav.
For having us on the show.
Yeah, absolutely, and uh keep watching, if you need any real estate wisdom. We have experts coming over here, giving the insight from how they work, what the challenges they face. And what the solution they're thinking of, what their vision and wisdom is. So keep on watching for more real estate wisdom. Uh and don't forget to subscribe our YouTube channel, Apple Podcast or Spotify. Thank you for watching, bye for now.
Thank you, bye.
Disclaimer, the information provided in this podcast is for informational purpose only. And should not be considered as financial or investment advice. Consult with your professional before making any real estate decisions.